Good, I mean, but if you want to wait until it's a little bit closer when you get our agenda, I think that's a good idea.
So, okay, so then I, all right, so we'll, we'll wait on.
We'll put it on your calendar.
Put it on the calendar and probably start making the room reservation. I'm just, we get a report.
Just as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, no, it's, this is.
That's downtown Rapid there.
Of course. So, okay, so that's what I have for that.
Field Day says it's really, really busy this year. Sure, send us your address. All right, Sherry, anything else, sir?
Did you visit with Clint and Larry?
Yes, I did visit with Clint, I did visit with Larry, I did visit with Todd. And in our zoning book, if we look at.
I went down there anyway, I think I got them all settled out. Let's just see if they, everybody was up front, they said that your own campers, they don't need a permit for sewer?
Right and wrong, according to Todd from First District. You can only have, if they're your own campers, you are fine to have them on the back lot. He is also bringing all of his in-laws, he's bringing all these other campers in. He wants the local electricity to be, and he wants sewer on each one of these camper pads, and he wants all this other stuff. He can't do that.
He said two.
One for him and one for the other owner of the property. Then all their children, all their in-laws, all their people are coming and doing that, is what he told me.
He told you that.
He told me that. And so then I called Todd from First District, and in our layfront, if you guys turn to page 27, it says on permitted use, public and private parks. Well, and then down on a conditional use, it says private parks and campground. So what's the difference between permitted use, private park, and a conditional use, private park? What's your definition in the back, what's the definition of that? Our private park in the definition, private park. It just goes to say parks and recreation. And a park in the permitted use, according to Todd's interpretation, is a recreational. It's got a swing set, it's got a slide, it is a recreational park. In the permitted conditional use, a private park and campground is a campground, is what he said. So that's something that him has been doing a lot of research on and doing a lot of stuff to make sure that our zoning ordinance is coherent. And so we, so this is another thing that we have written down for us to do when we do that amendment. We have all these little things, and to make clarification on this. So after the store, after I called them all back, he stopped doing what he was doing. And he, instead of hooking up to the sewer on the front lot to make it all go to the back lot, to where he wanted to put all these campers, I said, you can't do that, you need to contact the state, which he told me he did. And he said it was fine, and I says, no, if you're doing a camper ground, you can't do that. If you have to have that whole lot have its own mound system, if that's the case. And your electricity, you'll have to do that. But if you want to fill that whole back lot in with gravel, I don't really care. You can't have more than your own, what you own for campers on there for an extended period of time. If they're coming for the weekend, for three days, they can go dump it in the public thing and then be on your way. Take your camper with you, don't leave it set there for a long period of time.
That's what Larry told me too.
Yeah, so that, so I think we got everything under control, so thanks for going out there and doing that.
Settle, because Larry was kind of warm about it.
Yes, very much so, very much so.
Different story than what was presented.
Yeah, the other two guys, they didn't tell me quite the way they told you.
We talked, it was a camper.
Yeah.
A camper turned into two, turned into.
Turned into three, four, five, yeah.
Oh, so now that's, because that's what Larry had heard, whatever.
Right, but yeah, I visited with Larry here and with Todd.
Well, I'm glad you got them to call back. Kind of warm when I was.
Is that it for you, Sherry?
Yes, that is all for.
You want a motion to adjourn the board of adjustments? For Gal.
Can I have a question, are we going to be discussing your going out and looking at places that you're on the agenda for later?
Really, yes.
Okay. We're just looking for an update, so okay, fine.
Okay, yeah. So, motion to approve since kind of left.
Yeah, Regal got that.
Tom, second by.
Want to second that?
I'll second.
All favor of that, signify this way, not. Motion carries. Come on, call order. Commission meeting, begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the free and honest states. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there additions or questions? Minutes. Did I see something in here about the second reading was July instead of June?
Oh, sorry. Thank you for.
About halfway down.
Yeah.
July 15th.
Yeah, thank you for catching that.
Anything else? Is there a motion to approve amended minutes and today's agenda? Motion, your second. Carlson, thank you, all favor, signify this way, not. Motion carries. Okay, are you here for public comment?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I get to be first.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'd hear talk, but they speak to me, so. I don't like to be recorded.
Yeah, it's a public, a public meeting, and we've got it live streaming now, so.
Because what I'm here about is, kind of follows up on my father fighting World War II for the United States and other countries. And I haven't heard anything about the Second Amendment sanctuary, except the last I heard is that you were going to talk to our state's attorney. Has that got done?
We haven't had that subject come up for a long time, Gary.
And nothing has passed, over half of the United States, of the people that are making the world, the United States what it is, has passed it. Is there any reason you wouldn't pass it?
I, I don't think anything formal has been presented to us on that.
You what?
Nothing formal has been presented to the commission.
So I have to get a petition?
Well, you're free to do whatever you want, Gary, but nothing has been presented to the commission.
What exactly are you asking for, I guess I'm.
I, I.
We did talk.
Yeah.
I asked my commissioner to see what she could do about it.
And he, and Gary has talked to me, and, and we did talk to Dylan that, that one day.
Don't back out of this, you know that.
Well, so.
No, him.
But at the, but at the time, is, isn't it covered under the Constitution?
It's covered under the Constitution, but we have a bunch of liberal people that want everything for nothing. It's trying to take the guns away from the honest people so that illegal people can have them. And we don't need to let it happen and have a civil war, let's be a sanctuary county. The state rejected it. Why, I don't know, we're supposed to be constitutional. And that's all this is saying, we want to follow the Constitution. We want it sanctuary so nobody can change our law. We might lose our governor on the next election, we might end up losing our rights for guns.
Yeah, I think Dylan kind of let, let's just kind of see what the rest of the world does, wasn't it?
It's over 50% of the United States passed it, no?
He made a comment that it kind of superseded federal law, that we can't handle.
We're not allowed to supersede. And the states can do that, and we don't need that. That we can not let the state supersede the federal Constitution.
What's going on here? Mr. Sheldon brought up the fact that apparently, and you can speak for yourself on this, he would like to see Roberts County as listed as a sanctuary county in terms of protection of the Second Amendment, do I have that right, Gary?
Yes. If you look it up, you can see all of them that are sanctuary already, or the honest have had people take them to court, I don't know, that they don't want it. I don't know who's going to win. But if it's there, they got to go to court to fight the honest people that have guns. Because you know, if they take away from the honest people, the illegal, and them are going to have guns.
I guess at this point, if there's a lawsuit pending in Oregon, my advice would be to wait and see how that lawsuit in Oregon plays.
Why wait?
Because then if we, if we do it, that lawsuit gets overturned, we're going to waste the county's money fighting a lawsuit that we're going to lose anyway if there's precedent for the lawsuit already.
Over half the United States has it, no, we got one place fighting it.
All it takes is one, and then the rest of.
It doesn't.
The rest of the whole.
It's the United States, one state that beats it is not going to win. You're going to prevent a civil war by keeping our Constitution.
Just saying, wait and see how the lawsuit plays.
We all wait. And that's what you're getting paid for, waiting.
Sir, my job is to represent the county and their interests.
And with your opinion.
My educated.
These people right here are the ones that have been elected to office to do it.
As we see.
There's very, a lot of professionals in the government that make every excuse for not doing things instead of doing things, and it's getting sickening.
All right, you've heard what our position is on it, thank you for coming.
You would have saved some time by passing it, I wouldn't have had to come up here. It's a simple thing, there's nothing that is going to hurt to have it. If they take it away from you, fine, but right now, it's nice to have. Bye. See, Gary, you're, I, I got a lot more I'd like to talk about, but I'm upset about this, so I'll leave.
Sounds good. Sherry, you're next on the agenda.
Okay, um, first thing, first, we are out on the road doing our reappraisal this year. Uh, we have finished Clare City. Lisa and Sue are out on the road to White Rock today, I believe. Um, I have been doing the last week of New Eppington, we have another three days in New Eppington. And then we will be, I will be down to Peaver next week, and then we will be in Roswell in July. So we should have it, all of our field work done by the end of July. And then we have a couple people, are a couple days for reschedule, that people can't meet us on those days that are scheduled. They have a couple days to reschedule, so we will be out doing them, and then we will be putting on this stuff in the books so it will go on the assessment notice, tax roll for 2022, April 23, by November 1st.
Sounds good.
So we have that.
Do we have additional towns left, Senator?
We will have Ortley, Summit, Womack, and Corona, and we will pick those up next year.
How long do you think it'll take to do Ortley, Summit, and Corona?
Uh, we probably could get those done in a month, and the reason, and then we will add to getting on doing the large acreage, the large farms.
Why are we not finishing up those until we get them up?
Because the bookwork that goes with it, there's a lot of bookwork that has to go with these property cards, so time we can get all that into the system and build into all the paperwork that needs to be done with all of those.
So you're going to have the towns that we have done in the books by November 1st?
Yes.
And if you do these other three?
We won't get these last four in the books.
This is the data entry that you're talking about?
The data entry, it takes about an hour per card to get through. Time you write everything down, time you get it figured out, so that is well for the property, time you do your sales ratio, time you see for everything else. So we can make that educated guess, not just pull the number out of this guy.
So are we, you're off schedule then? On schedule or?
Well, everybody is off schedule due to last year's COVID. We were unable to go out last year for the COVID, so now we're on that five to seven year frame, and.
These towns, we might not do all the towns in one year.
No. The towns that we are doing this year got moved from 2019 because we, you guys wanted us to do the town assistant prior to any of our outlining times, so then we moved them up. So we are still on the same schedule that we worked for.
Does it behoove us to, to go ahead and do these other four towns and then bring in some, some people just to do data entry?
Well, I'm the one who, Lisa and I are the certified assessors, we are the only ones who can put value on the properties.
Okay, so you can't, you can't have a data entry person there.
We can have somebody, and Patty does the data entry, she does all that kind of stuff. But Lisa and I are the certified assessors for the county, and so we are the only ones that have the approval to put value on.
Right, but you want to inspect the property, then off your notes, they do the data entry.
They could do some of the data entry, except the valuation. And that's where I sit down, and I have the whole town sitting out, I go through every block, I go through everything, I take out all my sales from last year that has happened in that town, I figure out what the market is, I figure out what the cost approach is, and then with all that information, then I can go back to all the property cards and I can add that value accordingly.
I guess the point I'm getting at is if, if we don't finish up this year, those, those four towns are going to prevent us from getting as much done on the stuff that's really going to make us some money next year, the farms.
Well, really, if the, these are, okay, so this goes, today is 2021, it goes on the 2022 assessment. We're not going to see a tax dollar generated until 23.
Well, I understand that, if, if we don't get it done this year, this is we one year farther out. And I think that we need to get on these farms, because I know that there's a lot of stuff out there that has not been properly documented, and then we're going to find out a whole lot of additional revenue out there in terms of taxes.
Well, and just by the two, three towns that we have done so far, we have found a lot of documentation that has not been added on already.
I believe that, I believe that, but it's a much smaller scale than these farmers are going to be dealing with.
It is.
And I don't want to see that go on another year because we couldn't get these four little towns.
Well, isn't it possible that you would do the rural property and those towns in one season?
We could start, we will start the rural properties, rural properties are going to take us two years. Time we visit every place in Roberts County, it's going to be a two-year plan. I, I can guarantee you that, I mean, I can work from eight to five, go to everybody's place.
That's a big job, I just.
Every half hour, we can be there, but.
Personally, I think it'd be better to keep the, the staff that's knowledgeable, doing the, doing the projects than to bring temporaries. I mean, it seems like we've got inner-office error adjustments, you know, quite frequently. And if we bring in temporaries to do that kind of stuff, I think we're just exposing ourselves to more, more errors. I think it's a two-year project anyway, and if you can get all those towns done next year, and the majority of the rural properties, I think you're on course. I think you're on course.
My concern is that we take the class of property and adjust the value of a half or a half or a half, but I got the inequity of taxes. Some of them have some value.
I get it, I get it. But I don't know how else you can do it with short staff.
And then when I was out at conference in Malden Hot Springs, a couple of things that were brought to my attention is that it is highly recommended that we, as of July 1st, would amend our resolutions that we have for discretionary and for the commercial and for the egg, just due to the fact that the code, our tax code number is changing as of July 1st. Our taxation in codified law, there are 10-6. Chapter 10-6 is all changing, all the numbers are changing. So as of July 1st, we would need to have all of our documentations that we have, that state, any of our codified laws to be adjusted to the new number. So I will, I have a conference with Wendy, a Zoom meeting on the 17th, on Thursday. She will be sending out all the information, how everything will be done. And so all those, but at conference, they recommend that all of our resolutions be amended to reflect that new statute. Okay, a couple other.
So you'll bring the resolution for us next week?
Um, it's not going to.
July 1st?
Yeah, I'll bring it next week. It's not going to be a full-blown resolution, is what Wendy had said for the Department of Revenue. She said we just need to amend it. So I will visit with her on how we have the paperwork for that. And then a couple of other changes to the equalization is House Bill 1042 is the buffer strip. That changed from annual application and you only got 40%. Now it is becoming, you only have to apply every 10 years for your buffer strip, and it's a 50%. The egg class, House Bill 1085, the egg land class, they removed the 10% income regulation and now it's strictly 2,500 gross. And then the owner occupied status, Senate Bill 182, that got repealed and it didn't pass. It got killed or what the proper word for it is, I don't know.
Prefer to the 40.
Prefer to the 40. Okay, there's only 40 days. And anyway, that stays the same as it is. It is your house you live in and a garage, be it attached or unattached. Any other outbuildings are not classified as owner occupied because you do not live in that. You do not live in your storage shed, so that storage shed does not. What the bill wanted was to include everything that you have on your property become owner occupied and it was.
Unless she's supposed, then she did the dog.
So you're being kicked out before, have you?
Yeah, no, no. And so they reviewed and updated that, Chapter 10-6. So all of the things that we need to do. So our assessment notices, the discretionary recommended amendment, like I said. And then something, something big, and I, the soil tables. There's been a few counties that applied to new soil tables and some of their values have increased quadruple due to that. Lot of frustrated farmers, ranchers. So they are holding back on it, the state, when I say they, they're holding back on it for a year because they want to really work with SDSU Dr. Eric, where they have been working with and they are trying to figure out what's causing all these big fluctuations and stuff. I had visited with a lot of our township boards. I wanted them to come in and go over each township soils with our new soil tables before we even applied it with our existing ones. I would still like to do that because I have the new table and we want to see the comparison so then I can report to the state to say, Roberts County is looking pretty good, you got it figured out a little bit, or there's a lot of discrepancies, so we need to really figure it out. So I would like to still meet up with the township boards on figuring out our soils sometime in August and in September. With that, one last thing of encouragement for me. I was awarded a certificate out at the conference. So I have been a member of good standing for five years with the Association of Assessing Officers.
Congratulations.
So, yeah, so with that, that's what's going on.
I guess, Sherry, I would like to have you drop Wendy a little email or something addressing what Tom has brought up. Three years ago, when the Department of Revenue approved our assessing schedule and that schedule has been thrown off. And for you to mention that rural properties will be done in a two-year cycle versus all in the same year and that they should acknowledge that or approve it or whatever so we get, give them a heads up.
But not only will that, will that egg property assessed in that fashion as we do to these towns, right?
Yeah, because that schedule has changed as well. Okay, thank you for that. You don't hold up Dylan and Kay here. Thanks for coming in, Kay and Dylan.
Thank you. I only have one day this morning or it will be. Talk about executive. So before we go in, then do you guys have anything for me this morning?
I do not.
Nope. Is there a motion for executive session? To discuss potential legal?
Yep.
By Carlson. Is there a second to that by Virgil? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's a slow process because you look at everything, read everything.
Marking the pictures of, you know, future generations of these people are. I think so. And I cross it to you and I'm reading them. I only have 112 pages left between the work.
Were you supposed to read it back in college or something?
No, I'm not. I really haven't gone through this moment yet. I cannot get into more yet. No, I started to look at and read some stuff that I hadn't. I love doing it.
See, it's easier to visit than ever to just go and pay.
Well, I don't know, I just got to be a part of it. So I want to get some stuff done. I can finish the house and then maybe even move on.
That's nice, moving around again. I mean, I was this weekend, we call it a road trip. Something, what, constitutional road trip. Taking the white car and going someplace I didn't, that's it. Doesn't hurt to count, but long as we're involved, here and there.
So, yeah, so get this, this man's whole time helps as attorney. So the night off, too. I'm back very soon.
Well, thanks, appreciate it. How are you today?
Good, yep.
Not so bad. Oh, little guy's been handing out those business cards all over town. Did you get one yet?
No.
Giving out to everybody. Got a kick out of those.
Well, we kept the artwork on file, so.
I don't think he'll go through the whole half a box of whatever was there, but. I think he's pretty excited. His brother wanted one, so we had to wait some, some of the white off there. Little guy's name, put the other guy's name on there, so he was happy. Wow, we're still on schedule. How about that? What exactly was that, that second amendment thing? Just say that they, they couldn't take your guns, is that what you're looking for? Oh, okay, all right. So we're just playing it simple, like the migrant thing.
It's kind of like, you know, it's kind of like the reverse of marijuana. Federally illegal.
Right.
They're supposed to legalize it. Well, it's legal in that state, but it's still against federal law.
Yeah, they trump anywhere.
Clear yourself, it's sanctuary, how many are the states or whatever you want. But federal government says, well, who's these are illegal? They're illegal, I don't care what state.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
You can't supersede federal law.
No, but they're, they're saying then that they wouldn't enforce the law. So I mean, the local cop might not be.
Which I read a month, that really jumps to my ability.
Wait, yeah, like.
For example, federal government said we can't have 16 rounds. And you were saying, they want to say we're not going to force that. Like, you have 11 or 9 rounds, but you're liable for you didn't enforce that law.
Sure.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah, we could be sitting, wouldn't enforce it. Second reading. I was surprised to hear him say that the state.
You didn't have to.
Didn't have to. Yeah, I suppose, but she does a lot of stuff there. No matter what you say. Legal advice might be.
That has to be happening. If she can serve the title of governor, the fireworks.
Yeah. Which you wouldn't be able to have out there this year because the fireworks, I'm sure. Yeah. Waste of taxpayer money.
Yeah.
Sure.
There was a deal on the, it's on 60, we were talking about the.
The high velocity thing? Do you see that?
But they're talking about it. More or less a true name for this AR-15, which is just a, you know, it has nothing to do with. It's just a. I got, I got those right. I said, you had a lot of paths on it.
Or the, or really.
Not AR-15, because it isn't, it's a high. I don't know if you know, that's where.
Yeah. That was pretty nasty to deal with, wasn't it? The way it just blows up the inside.
I haven't seen him since he got healed up after this.
He's in the same realm. He's going to Walmart.
He's already bent there and back. He's got something for us. He's got something for us. Ready to start up again? We are at a point in the agenda where we have the second reading of ordinance number 29. The ordinance reads, "A temporary ordinance regarding the issuance of local medicinal cannabis establishment permits and/or licenses." Is there a motion from the board to approve ordinance number 29 that we reviewed last week? Motion by Virgil, is there a second? By Johnston, is further discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any public input regarding the ordinance? Any comments from the board? Hearing none. County Commissioners' action vote to approve or deny the ordinance. Amending the zoning ordinance requires a simple majority to pass. Need another motion? By Zimple, second by Carlson. Any discussion on that? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous whole.
That guy was in your, that Todd Cade. Did Todd Cade tell us one time that he had some property, motherland some property down on the lake?
I'm sure he did.
I thought so too, and I thought, well, this is not asking for variance if you didn't see him.
But don't have.
Don't have variance. But I thought he said the motherland or something had some property down there or.
Yeah, me, don't have to deliver. That guy's two bucks. Yep. Oh, Fay's got something for us.
Well, what did I schedule like next Tuesday? I have a conflict that probably will leave at 11:20.
Really have anything on for next Tuesday?
Will be done. Will be done.
Okay.
Sure. 11:15, we'll be out here next Tuesday, right, Dennis? 11:15, you want to be done? 11:20? It'll be a goal. It'll be a goal of ours. Is there a motion from the board to approve our plat resolutions that were previously reviewed at our zoning board of adjustments by Carlson? Is there a second to that by Johnston? Any discussion on the plats? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. What's legalizing this? I don't know.
Okay.
We were up there.
I have two resolutions. One is just, it's a kind of a redo of our old resolution stating that we have seven liquor licenses available and to set the fees. We didn't have Buffalo Lanes on that old resolution because they weren't in existence at that time. So we have Valley View Country Club, Cheetahs, LTR, and Buffalo Lanes are $1,200 annual and all others are 700. So that's one resolution. And then the other resolution is regarding the new package.
Off sale.
Off sale. So we can, if we can adopt those two today, that's with a $5,000 fee, set fee. And it was my understanding from last week that when I send, I'm going, I am going to, as a courtesy, send a letter to our liquor license holders. We'll have five of them for package off sale. And you guys are in agreement just to charge them half of a year for this year if they choose to apply?
That would be effective July 1st, is that right?
Yes, yes.
All right, resolution number 2021-28 is the one that speaks to the 1, 2, 3, 4. The $1,200 and the $700 fee. Is there a motion to approve? By Zimple, second by Virgil. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, circulate this for signature. Resolution number 2021-29 is the resolution that speaks to the off-sale of liquor that Dawn had just told us about. Is there a motion for approval on that? Carlson, thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye. That motion carries. There's just room for one signature on that one.
Yeah. Oh, you guys have been talking to Sherry about that, showing that.
Check it on Dither?
Let Michael show him a basement that he was requesting for his.
Is that late? Yeah, yeah. Suddenly six was 114 feet or something.
Yeah.
Does Buzzard have that up?
Sure.
Yeah, she needs to look in to see whether that was something presented in her office or brought to the main stage.
But we looked at, yeah.
Well, but we didn't know. I don't know if it did. That some chief didn't put on a record, it's likely or that's.
Boy, yeah, yeah.
That's right.
They're on look.
They said it's going to warm out this week.
Cool off by the weekend, I think, too, wasn't it?
I also received an email from Brad Nelson from Modern View. What? He said, I'm just curious if the board decided to follow any recommendations for the heating and cooling systems or the LED lighting. What, what are your guys' wishes as far as what we should be doing?
The whole works over there.
I thought that we could include all the exit lights.
The exit lights, yeah.
Yes, and I thought Doug was going to.
He isn't, maybe look at anybody, take a look at that.
Well, I stopped over there. I wonder if I wasn't after a meeting on Tuesday because the AC wasn't working.
Yeah.
Thompson Mechanical. So I talked to the technician that was doing the work and, yeah, it's, actually, one of those fans was running backwards. Said, well, can you take the blades off and flip it around? No, so they were going to put it. The thing was low on freon, so it was added freon. Forgot to ask Dylan how it's cooling now. But I said, is your company putting together a proposal for changing this thing out? Whether it be a heating, cooling heat pump or if that boiler can queue off heat? He told me, yes, they were working on it.
Okay.
So I don't know how long it's going to be, but.
I guess with this name, I believe it takes a long time.
And now all three fans are running, two of them. Moving air the correct way and the one pushing air down. When I asked him, I said, well, can you just rewire it so it spins the other way? He said, no. Apparently.
Has it always been this way?
As far as I know, when they changed it. Because, I mean, when it was new, they were all blowing air from the bottom up, but when they changed it. And he did say that they do have a different motor on order. So the air does move the correct way. I mean, it's better than nothing, but it's not right. And I think maybe Dylan would have said something for us to work.
No, I was in this, why? Not like last.
It hasn't been working.
Yeah, so there is, there is a freon leak that's. He said, I don't know if I got enough freon to get it.
10,000 bucks or somewhere, 8,000 they spent last.
We're here last fall, Doug said, you know, so that's why you don't look back. So, I mean, it was everything over there, wasn't it?
Yeah, the whole heating and cooling system. I thought we were talking about looking at replacing the electric too. We never asked for any of that.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, now we.
We contacted local electricity, they have to be in contact with UCF, right?
Right.
And then we can do junkies and dealers. Maybe we shouldn't see it. I know Fuchy Elrod was busy, he packed my hired people, so it's so busy too.
Okay. And Monini's.
Yeah, he did our last, didn't he?
Yeah. I mean, I know, like, we had issues with our air conditioning at home and, yeah. That. That Rick, uh, he was...
Oh, I bet.
Especially during that time. But he didn't get our stuff, so. I would just, I didn't know what to respond back to Brad and tell him we're working on...
Because we have, we have credit, right? Because we do the work, we get some money back.
Yes.
Free money at this point. Right. And I think the lighting here would get it. But maybe if we could just contact Renaissance or Much Elrodal and then get them in touch with that.
You got a horse there, you said?
I think Pam did, yeah.
Variance? You need to sign this. You need to sign a move.
Absolutely, that has to be done. In general, states and municipalities. That's what I was going to say. League like... It's legal as the United States. Still agree by federal law. Federal law should have to do more than just make sure that they're... They got, leaving that question. This is Oregon state that's legalized. Our courts. Oregon, yeah. Why is nothing from the US border? Says federal law. Yeah, it is. Generally, it's based on its fact. You can have some like...
So that's just... And then let's just... Mutual service.
By state. State law will allow you to have tanks, which can rehabilitate some of the cases we can. You can't fill it through, you can't... You don't for free. You can't do...
It's still...
But that's only a guy. We can't have any liquor. I don't believe they've changed that.
I think you're right, yeah, they don't, yeah.
It'd be just like a dry wine.
Remember they first started traveling, went to some places down south and they said, where do I get a beer? Like, right now, you can't get a beer. They're like, yeah, right, yeah. I said, right now, you can't get a drink. Are you kidding me? How silly is that? But then they started changing. If you, if you stayed in a hotel and they had a bar, you could buy a membership. Or you got, you got a free membership with every night stay. And then you could drink at the bar because it was a private club, kind of, it's like this.
What state was that?
Oh, I don't remember, down south and Utah was one of them, like, things. Texas is... Oh, oh, a lot of them had bottle clubs and stuff like that. Yeah, I remember that Texas, yeah, that where the airport was on the outside of Dallas.
What's that reservation right out there though? I mean, that's right down out west.
Oh, Pine Ridge.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
But they go right across the border.
Yeah. Well, that's it, I mean, all these, I don't know why they do it, but they're losing a ton of revenue because you go to the next county and load up and bring all that home with you.
What was that, like, white lady, that whole border service?
Yeah. Yeah, it was huge, considering the population was, yeah. Yeah, crazy. Yeah, you can, you should regulate that stuff in the system.
There was a couple of guys here from Washington State, here in Seattle area. Over the, over the last week, they were heading back. They were driving, heading back, yeah. There was many, many places that there was no place, no restaurants to eat. Even in some truck stops, some...
Really, still?
In Montana, their truck stop were open, the restaurants.
Because they can't get workers, or?
I, I don't know what the deal was. I just saw it on Facebook.
And everybody's blaming everything on COVID, just jacking up the prices. Is the price of meat later on?
Yeah, I'm afraid. There's going to be a lot of things that are...
Well, then you gotta have, there's no demand for meat or they can't process it quickly enough. And if things don't improve around here, it'd be a lot of guys selling off their herbs and lawyers.
And why wouldn't there be a demand for meat?
Because the story I was told, I was that the processing plants are so reduced capacity with spacing and everything, that the guys don't want herbs. And then restaurants, we all need and everything, and just they're...
I'm to the point where they can't get their, you know, get their beef.
Oh, yeah, I said to him something, yeah. I've never had any, I've never had proper seating, I just can't afford it.
Just two things.
Not too bad out there today, or they getting warmed up?
Oh, it's beautiful. Perfect.
Perfect would be seventy-five. You like it, I...
You're going to be driving tomorrow, like, you're...
Yeah, I am again.
Tomorrow.
How many does that make?
Ten.
My god.
We're not...
Quick, round up the names, round up the names and ages. Needs and ages, real quick.
Yeah, I'm not that old.
You'll have a dozen by the time you're done.
Oh, I don't know. So, um, our underground tanks in the yard have been tested over three years now. We had to get ours tested. There was a guy from Hoadee and Farrow came down and did the whole works. They're sending the report today. I haven't seen it yet. So what the deal is, our steel buckets are top, need to be fixed. And so we call them the steel buckets and they test them. And this one, they're leaking or something, it's off, blow. And so I'm going to begin the, I'm going to give the report today. And I get a bid sheet from them that they're going to send them out, send in for a bid to get it fixed. That's what they do and whatever. And I have no idea how much it is, but I mean, I, you know, usually if it happens, I've gassed it, it should be better. What they call the concrete, we do it, but it's a lot of liquid just in dirt. All they got to do is hopefully dig it out and redo it, whatever. So it might be a little less expensive, but I have no idea how much some of that costs. Now, this is mandatory, so we did the requirements for all that, the tanks underneath. And then that's what they found. I don't have the whole report, like I say, so. Once we get that, then I'll update the bid and I'll report how much it's going to need to fix. Kind of tied it in that, we got no...
Yeah. There's something to think about. I called Holm last week after a meeting and asked if they were going to go out and look at your place out there.
Call them?
Hold it, you're in.
Oh.
They were going to go out and look at it. But he said that he got, uh, Wendy and Rick sending, they've been out there, hello, devastated. Have a report put together yet. I guess what I blew into is if, if they came back and said, we need to do this, 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 and put a building there. Is that if you're going to dig that tank up, she probably has some conversation with them. Oh, I thought you said they might have to dig it up.
Oh, no, they, they have to dig the top of the cap.
Oh, just the top of the cap, okay, okay.
Where the steel buckets are. Don't have to do no digging.
Okay, never mind.
Besides that, the, the, and then the gas tank where that is and all that, that would be far enough away from that building.
Okay, all right.
And I do have a report coming from Justin Clark. He's already cemented the whole yard and done all that. He's got, he's coming back. You know, I'll report that.
Who, when did he do that?
He did a couple weeks ago. But he's still behind because he did all the bridge project, he had to finish up with the state and all that, so.
Holm's done it now, too.
Anyway, he's going to give me a report of all the allocations and stuff that we had approved for, so.
Might as well call Larry and tell him, we don't need him there.
Yeah.
Already done some of the work, he said they both been out there, Rick and...
They got enough to keep us, they're trying to keep alive.
For what they've done, unless they're...
So, um, the next thing I got is... True North Steel down in Huron, I do, you know, down in Huron. Effective immediately, we are no longer able to honor the pricing that was previously supplied on the company bid. You may contact your local sales representative for current pricing. We've had all the emails come in now with the Iowa superintendent. Um, True North Steel has not wanted to honor, lend out, let culverts. Because COVID and all the pressing and all the southern crap that went along with it, they sent this to us. And what the deal is, Beale County is who we piggyback on. So Beale County, they don't have a meeting come next Tuesday. When we find out what they're going to do and what their attorney's saying, then I would, I would read it to you guys next week and then maybe we can make a decision on how you feel about whatever's happening there. You don't know what Beale County's going to do. I've already had sent this to the state attorney last week. And he said, well, let's see what the other counties are thinking, what they're going to do. Because we don't, we don't hold your instincts back to how the other counties, so. Luckily, we have a lot of smaller culverts that hopefully can get in and we don't have to pay them at a price. But the big ones, this, later on this summer, fall, when we do some bridges, but the big ones, they're going to, they're going to be at a different price. So that's what we got to look at. That's my main concern is the seven, eight footers I got to put in, you know, the big ones, the nice ones. Um, but this is where I have to tie. Want to find out from Beale County, if you guys, whatever, if they're going to be bidding. But what are they going to do, I don't know. What can, what can legally, um... I guess there's another option that I will start with the salesmen or another superintendent. If we need a culvert that's seven, eight foot, that's any of whatever, we can draw the steel up and say, well, that's the price, put a concrete, you know, and sort of have some of the...
The storage sewer is put together and sewer systems use some concrete sections, so...
Well, I don't want to use concrete section and let down in the culvert that we're going to replace with bridges, but, um... But, you know, the seven, eight footers that they might be able to supply, so.
You would use them if it was one, one piece?
We use, uh, just regular seven, eight foot culverts, yes.
Oh, really?
We use it over fifty feet, sixty feet, seventy feet, whatever money you want.
Really?
So you don't want to be messing with culverts, trying to tie them back together and structure money. One money, you have to work and this is four feet. You can use smaller structures, you know, that's what we do.
Right.
So once I find out where I'm at, I won't let you know and then we'll, you know, see all the... Did do a little bit of mowing on top of some places like the lake row in different months, they don't use it at all. I'm hoping that farmers and patchers will help on it. It's just because I know up by Russell, it's like Russell Dale's college, they leave this ten miles and a half mile. So we don't mess around there. But the rest of these, some people, I just got a call this morning, I have to call them back, they're advising whoever, because they live up there. They're down by...
Who was that? It must be you up there.
Anyway, he's wondering about mowing and wondering if we're mowing or something, you know. Um, you know, I don't plan on getting the top shoulder, it's dead.
You shorted your hay, so I suppose everybody will be...
We're, we're short of, we're short of hell, so we can't...
But C R P this year, too. I don't know, nothing on that.
Trying to keep everybody going right now and we're, you know, shorting a couple of that, so we can, you know, try to... We had a couple of that, you know, heck quit a lot of that. Yeah. So now we're coming back, so. Trying to get that through the file and trying to get some calls, so. That's all that is. I did get the road broom in now on Tuesday late. And I got it just about ready to go. Um, but the paperwork, they didn't send me the bill yet. And we don't have all that done, but I do have everything going, so.
So you pulled up this, what, to attract?
I got tracked around, I hope it's got enough power to pull it, so.
Well, you told us a pickup, pickup to...
Yeah, I did do a good pickup, but they didn't have the thirteen footer, I had a technical, so. Anyway, I got two tractors, the international, that international tractor's still tricking me, but I'm not getting that back.
Using the Kubota or...
I got the mortar on there, that's over a hundred and twenty-six hours. Cranked it up a little bit. I got to go and set it at the school and get some, down the ground and then I'll set it. You know, get around that. Get out of traffic. But other than that, I don't know how you feel about mowing the shoulders, the top, you know, like the main highways. We usually do the top shoulder, but right now, being for a shorter hill, trying to get the patch and mowing the caddo. You know, trying to get these roads to keep on, I'm not passing on right now. It's very good. And all the roads kind of in shape here, so.
If we try to get some young eighteen-year-old kid in the past, I think he passed by there every spring, but to just mow, which... Never been successful with that, have we?
Uh, and I called some older guys too, if they want to come back. But, uh... Could we be some, you know, hopefully we get, but... You got to get on the payroll on what would, you know, I have a, where you started that, and then that would be a negotiating thing, I suppose, if they wanted to start there. And then we have to get them onto the churns and the ride, you know, and all that.
Well, but I mean, it would just be a temporary...
It'd be a temporary thing.
Summertime job. I mean, the benefits of that would be...
More comfortable.
Well, no, that's a...
But don't we typically wait till the first of July to start putting up pay?
Yeah, we usually do it later.
Nasty or something, or...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's in, after the tent, June or whatever, but we didn't, you know, download it.
Maybe wait another week or so, everybody's going to start cutting.
I mean, I'm not sure that we want to do anything in time for the end of the month. Because there is nice cotton, but just right now, they're...
Yeah, they're a little cut, I see.
Want to be sure the gravel and stuff that's thrown out there. And if they got done spraying and that their stuff done, they should be doing the hand in the day. You know what I mean? So that's kind of what we do. Um, the only other thing is, I was in talk with the sheriff, we got a little, I don't know if it's the wind or not, or if they're taking merit, it's down on that, kind of a fourteen north of Hammond up to North Dakota border. I can go up there this morning and put them all back in again. You know, as long as you see it, just enough where you can drive it and it's soft. And it's still got to be close. And there is no way that, I would say, if you drive that type of dirt, you got people from out there. So I'm going to have to see the sheriff.
There's a water over the road? Are they driving through the water?
No, not through the water anymore, but you only have this narrow, a little wider mistake.
Banks are all soft.
And that's deep water on the side, you walk that, it can be fifteen feet. And so these people that think that they can just drive through it because they're local, it's not right. It should be defined and get it done. It should be defined and get it done. That road's closed, and why, I was gonna show you a picture of the stop sign, you know, after we just switched them, the stop signs were on.
Is this the year we can build it up a little bit?
Not yet, the water's still on top of the shoulders right here, so that has to be seen right now again. It's only been two weeks since you had that stop sign changed, and we already got it shot up, so. But it's still like, I don't change it, it's still like, but that's only been, you know, a week, a month, you know, so, but.
But don't take the guns away, Gary.
No. But anyway, that's all I have to say.
Are they, are they mad that the, that a guy switched their mop?
No, they just.
Because they're.
Just bored.
You got a trap down on eighteen, down there by Staggy's, you know where you go around in the whackstone there, that grid?
An eighteen?
Yeah, right on.
Yeah.
Grab it down there.
Yeah, right, correct me, yeah.
Yeah, grab it down there to tire, I mean, I hope you see, right there.
Yeah.
Boom.
It's been up for a long time, you know.
Boom, she gets, I had a few people call, and said, I said, I didn't think they'd come down.
Whenever we get down there, we'll get out.
Sneer it off.
I know that time, that's gotta be a little long.
She's quite a banger.
We got the main stuff done pretty good, but I'd like to go back there and get, you know, a little more, still a little bit more on that southbound lane, so, we might get that back.
Not dangerous anymore, no.
It's not as bad as it was, no.
I got, uh, a rolling up in our area, they'd like to purchase a couple of twenty mile an hour speed limit signs, what, what are those run, you know?
Our little price is probably between thirty-five and forty bucks, I would say forty-five at the most.
Forty-five each?
Yeah, was that, uh, the township, you mean?
Well, yes and no.
Okay.
The township won't take any responsibility for the.
Oh, okay. We got, we got twenties on hand.
Do ya?
You can go through the township, charge it, pay it, or the cost, on that type of deal.
Well, as long as you have them on hand, I'll let the guy know.
I don't know the exact price that is, but it's.
Not over, not over forty-five.
I wouldn't think so, I wouldn't even think, I, I shouldn't say because I don't remember the last time the price was getting high. Cause something I can look up and check, so, she's out on the wall, so.
Uh, as long as we're talking about these signs, just offhand, what does a stop sign cost that got all shot up like what you showed us? What, what does that cost?
Well, you have, uh, fifty dollar sign, a little under, and then you have two guys or one guy that's, uh, you know, sixty and a half, seventeen dollars, now you're gonna put it up, and you have, you know, replace it, and your driving time will break up in your ass.
Hundred and fifty bucks.
To go up there, you know, you're tapping, up on a bunch of things.
What is in there?
I mean, it's stuff like that that happens everywhere. At least, road closure, hurricanes, that should be a, you know, like twenty dollars fine. Somebody went there and not killed the dog, you know, like they calmly tap them on the record, I believe, it's not close. This happens, somebody, you know, somebody going over there, they're in the union, can't see it, go over there, because signs are down, they moved in the dead zone, you know, and that's not good, especially with kids, you know, under the, kind of, other roads around and stuff, you don't know where they're going, so, just wondering if we know that I'm in the back or something.
I, I mentioned this to Pat a couple days ago, that I did get the incident report from the sheriff's department on the bridge that got damaged down on fifteen. The only problem is that it's got the person's name, no other information, no phone number, no address, no insurance information, so, I was gonna give it to Pat, and Pat'll have to go see Dylan and try and get the rest of that information.
Yeah.
The mother people.
Wasn't there a different report?
Didn't have the necessary information to hold the guy responsible. I think Aaron knows.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they know where he's from.
From, uh.
Huron.
Yeah, down in Dolan, that area or something.
Yeah, Dolan, I think, yeah.
Otherwise, I'd, so, I'll, I'll give that to Pat, follow up on it.
All right.
Thank you, Pat. But what you're telling me, Pat, is down on the eastern bridge, you know, on the side there, they sprayed that grass seed and they put that stuff over the top. If they don't water that, they're never gonna need grass to grow, they have responsibility to, to make sure that gets wet, or, otherwise it's all just gonna wash out.
That's kind of the reason they got that, that stuff that's sprayed out there instead of seeding it.
Yeah, I know, but, but you gotta keep that wet. If they, if they don't come back and spray it, so it's, they're wasting their money.
I guess it's something I'll have to talk to Clark or talk to them about in the state, you know, what the regulation, how long it can be, or.
Well, I just wondered, is there, is there something in our contract that says, you know, you can spray that stuff down, but you gotta get any grass grow, you have to come back and redo it, cause otherwise it's just all gonna wash out.
It just has, you know, in the contract, people are supposed to do it, but you don't know after that, a couple shots of rain, a lot of it.
Yeah, I don't.
I'll talk to them, see what they say.
They see they just put a couple loads of gravel on a couple approaches?
Yeah, I have, I have my guys.
Oh, you're ready, okay, okay.
I gotta go down there and get another dog, I gotta get the old dog up.
Yeah, alright.
Hopefully do that tomorrow, within hours, so, yeah, see there, it was so hot.
Yeah, nice to have that open again, nothing but big smiles, nothing but faces when they're driving across the new bridge.
Yeah, they can go a hundred miles an hour down now, and they don't, you know.
Now, one of the, one of the guys that lives down there, he told me, he says, I didn't think, uh, it would ever happen.
Oh.
Think it ever replaces.
Well, it only took three years.
I said, well, if you don't have it against it, better enjoy it, right?
Luckily we played twenty percent, and then we figured out another bridge one to pay back.
Yeah, alright, we, uh.
We can talk about him later too, or?
Yeah, I was gonna say, because at that time, I saw the post going back.
Thanks for coming back up, Sherry.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't make it when you called on, somebody just come walking in.
Uh, that's all right, yeah, projects going on, but Tom has paperwork there.
Very, very good total work. This, um, actually back in two thousand, that section line down there by Schmitz Land and Lot forty one, and going over to where the, um, Albert Claws and property has a great fine road over there, that section was vacated. That little part was vacated, and that's that boulevard, that's what's going on today. So when a road gets vacated, thirty-three feet goes to one owner and thirty-three feet go to the other owner, and that's where that additional thirty-three feet came from. So that's why it's at a hundred and fourteen. It's been that way since two thousand, is when the actual vacation took place.
So how did they down, how's it down to seventy-sixteen now?
Because we actually were out there in two thousand twenty-one, and we did the measurement, we drew a tape, and it was actually from property line over here on lot number forty, Albert over two, where the end where the boulevard begins, was seventy-six feet. So, they interpolated this eighty-one back in the day, which what they always do is they take the front and the back and then divide it, but, I mean, that's how they come up with it, they do that, that's the way we've always been taught to do it. This is actual seventy-six feet of shoreline, and so, at county board time, we went down there and we made that adjustment to seventy-six.
Well, where did that thirty-three feet go to?
Well, we removed it because that fence line is still there. Property owner on this side never removed the fence line and he's never had access to it. This became a, this should become a civil suit before anything.
Well, who's paying for it then? Who's paying for the?
Who has been paying for the thirty-three feet? Shawin has always been paying for that thirty-three feet up until county board time at two thousand forty one, he's always paid it, it's always been there, and the neighbor on this side has been paying for their thirty-three feet.
And neighbor Nats, they got the fence up.
And they've got the fence over here, and so, Mr., Mr. Shawin then does not have access to it because. So, so that is what we did at county board time, is we went out there, we took the actual measure, that's how we come up with seventy-six feet, because he's not getting access to any of this other stuff. So, I'm, I'm just telling you what we had done.
It's Ralph, I wonder if you know Ralph Smith, he's on the board.
Right there.
Have you talked to him about it?
I have not talked to.
Yeah, right there.
Has to talk to him right now, well, come in here, but, I don't think.
How many feet of shoreline property does he own?
He owns.
I want, I don't care what he has access to, he owns.
Seventy-six plus thirty.
We just agreed, he should only have seventy-six when he was in Gordy.
What, at county, at county board, we agreed at seventy-six, because that's where the fence is, that documentation back in two thousand shows that it's been vacated. So, in reality, when something is vacated, property owners on both sides get, get split down the middle and it goes to each owner. That fence was never moved, he does not have access, he had to put it.
Which is a barbed wire fence or what?
It's, it's a makeshift fence, yes.
Well, if it's his property, but if it's not, it's his property.
Access, that's what I think.
Doesn't seem like it to me either, but.
I think you should do, should do, seventy-six, hundred and ninety. Seventy-six and thirty-two. You're running for seventy-six.
I agree that.
So, compared from eighty-one to seventy-six plus the thirty-three.
So, if you got that, who's gonna pay on that thirty-two feet?
Well, he has been paying enough.
No, they're gonna pay on the other side, they've got a, you got a sixty-six foot right away, and this guy's paying, this is thirty-three, and nobody's paying on this thirty-one.
For two thousand twenty-one assessment.
No one's paying on the three, that was owned by his property owner, this guy's the fence, but I don't think so.
Well, I would say so too, yes.
But he's been paying up to.
Four years back, we're not having.
But if you just pay about his, their money, then who's gonna pick up that thirty-two?
Those thirty-three feet, that's who's gonna pay taxes on.
Right, right, well, I agree, I agree.
How was this presented to us? Because I can't believe it was presented to us, like you just gave it to us, and we were just saying, oh, hey.
Well, he showed up here with Gordy, who was the attorney, and he said that he was incorrectly stated, that he had a hundred and fourteen and actually has seventy-six where that actual number's worth, and therefore should be reduced, and he said, okay, fine. And then he came back after the fact and said, oh, we want four years back taxes, uh, forgiven as well. We have it right away now, right? Refund it.
Well, yeah, and I'm looking at it here, the allocation to five is what it was based on.
But get a little your foot crossed.
My notes in there, they say, front, box, seventy-six feet, they're paying for six hundred and dollars, eight hundred dollars of running course, and reduce because of the steep slope.
It goes wrong. We're in, we're in.
By the road.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so, we are on Lot forty-one of Schmitz Land, and on the other side is we have great line, where we have blossoms down in bottom. The, um, boulevard down there got vacated back in two thousand, two thousand, according to our records, and so, thirty-three feet up, you remember, do you know exactly where I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so thirty-three feet next here, thirty-three feet next there. The fence never got moved, that was over there. And so, what the story is, is that, um, the attorney for Lot forty-one is asking for back taxes on property back, he feels he doesn't own it at all, should have to pay for that thirty-three feet of vacated. But the, when something is vacated, it goes to both parties.
Right. It goes back on the tax rules, because we, as a township, we have another role if someone wants to do the same thing too. And I, as a township, I have no inclination of really doing it for the simple reason, I don't want to go through the work, do my, so, I'm handing it over to them, and if you hire a lawyer, but I don't, I also don't think you realize that he only gets half of the rule, all of them.
Right, and in this particular party, the fence never got, he never got access to the thirty-three feet because of the neighbor never moved anything.
The fence should have got relocated to the center of what was the road.
Exactly, and it has not, so now they're asking for.
Is the fence, do you mean catalytic or something, or is it just an old fence?
No, it's actually two, all spots.
It's two properties.
One would be Terry Blosson, I assume.
So, I mean, if a fence didn't get moved, and the guy still owns thirty-three feet from the center of that road, so.
It's basically his fence.
I would say, yeah, I would say so, yeah, it's his fence.
Since two thousand, since two thousand, when that vacation began.
I suppose there's some lake frontage in there, that's why he has, because always property taxes would be minimal, but with the lake, lake front in there, he probably wishes he could have been using that property for all these years, but.
He made that big jump there, but you've seen that at the end of the process, but now.
I don't know. I think it's your responsibility as a landowner to keep yourself educated on what's going on.
I would think so too.
I don't really feel that's county responsibility, but.
Oh, you hired a lawyer?
I don't know.
But that's, that's the issue at hand, so I don't know if it becomes a, is it a consulting issue, or is it a civil issue between two parties who's not utilizing the property as their, and each other?
Can you do that to Gordon Nielsen, and explain, would you just explain to us?
Um, it's in your guys' folder. The letter come to you, I never received the letter.
Put it on the schedule, tell them to come in, I mean.
Will it, is our office, your office, an error in any way in determining that?
So when you heard, how was the five feet that we actually measured? So, maybe a question would be, when it was, the road was vacated, do you think you let both parties know?
I would ask.
Hard to say, back then, it was pretty sloppy work. You think you should have done that, but what they've done now, I don't, don't really think, I guess maybe not.
The current owner, um, Shawin did not own the property at the time of vacation, he acquired it in two thousand seven. So, the vacation was done in two thousand, um, Mr. Shawin acquired it in two thousand seven.
Yeah, Shawin on the D. Yeah, you're exactly right, Mr. Shawin on the D, that he bought such and such plus half of right away.
Plus, yeah, thirty-three feet of.
Which is what it did, because we were charging that hundred and fourteen feet all along, until this past year.
Right.
Yeah, so it showed.
It, it, it showed it on there, and he has been paying the tax on there, and the only thing that, when I visited with him, when he called me to come down to look at his property, he did tell me that, he says, I. he did tell me that, he says, I erred to look at the assessment notice and property tax for two thousand twenty. So he did not see the jump that the valuation had increased on Lake Lots due to home sales that were happening down there. And so therefore it, it pretty much did a good double. So he was concerned about that. That was his biggest concern and then now it's all because of the shoreline has blessed this case.
We didn't have Gordy come in and try to talk. They had to send, they had to send... Like send, we'll review the case and we'll know.
And then he'll, then he'll bring his attorney back in, so we won't have to have words.
Would it be him or be Gordy? I mean, send it right to Gordy?
Probably ask Gordy to respond and I'll be sent to the attorney, so. Thanks, thanks, I appreciate it. Yeah, that's, it sits on his property. His fence, he inherited. But so, so why didn't we then reduce his linear footage of the lake?
Because in the past, what you guys have told me is that we don't, you shouldn't do the circulation. You should do the actual square frontage is what the previous documents that you guys had said. Because they were entered doing different county board stuff. And I said, this is how we figured out. This is the way I've been taught. This is what we do. We take the front and the back. If you do that, so we can get the square footage. And that would be the thing. So then they, you guys as board members have told me to use actual footage.
But he had seventy-seven acres, or seventy-seven feet before, then he got that thirty-three feet.
And I measured it was seventy-six.
From eighty-one to seventy-six, but not from a hundred and fourteen to seventy-six.
So seventy-six plus thirty-three would be a hundred and nine.
So that should have been our correction.
Should have been a hundred and nine.
So who got paying taxes on this other thirty-three feet?
The other property owner.
Although I don't think so.
He is paying on this.
He should be paying on his thirty, his side, but the guy did it in twenty-twenty-one and he's asking to be relieved for the last four years. So no one's gonna be paying taxes on it. And going forward, no one's paying taxes on that. I think so. But it sounds like to me.
We made the adjustment in four twenty-one. Hey, it'd be simple. Let's have Gordy come down, one avenue. That's the way it is. Put the thirty-three feet back on.
Time to keep the fence. But what was that last letter we had for him?
Me and just said, Gordy, so this is what happened. To his grand, thirty-three feet.
So the road was vacated, is there a new plaque on it or anything?
This is the documentation on the vacation. It's recorded, it was registered.
And it's attached to that specific property.
It should be attached to the whole property.
So are we all, even if that's the way it should be, it should be, it shouldn't have been changed from one fourteen to seventy-six. It should have been changed from one fourteen to one oh-nine. And that's based on an actual tape measure or whatever wheel or whatever. So I mean, the, the thing that we gave him at, at the board this year a couple of months ago, that would probably stick. Right, so we just have to change it going forward. We did request to have taxes reduced. The linear footage would be denied as well for the last four years. See, does it make sense to me?
He wants to pull about the five feet.
What?
If he wants to pull about the five feet, why don't you ever pay that?
Sure, yeah.
We're gonna have Dawn draft a response or Sherry gonna do a response?
I think if you maybe just talk to Gordy and explain what happened, maybe he'll have a different opinion.
Well, I think, I'm sure he said, well, I pressed on.
Do you feel comfortable drafting it or can she, can she draft it and we'll add it? Sherry, would you mind doing a response and then, and then we'll, we'll review it before it gets sent in?
With the help of Dawn, we can do it.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there comments yet? Look like how you wear it.
They never should.
Okay, he's got issue two. Okay, very good. I've got three more. One is for the Landry Sandy Sue Tribe. One is for Hamlin County, the other is for the... All the, the same rates that I talked about last week.
What was the other one besides duel?
Uh, Hamlin duel and Landry Sandy Sue Tribe.
There's an article in the news last night, I think it was down in, oh, Yankton maybe, where they had a forty-one thousand dollar bond issue, forty-one million dollar bond issue for the courthouse jail.
That was last week.
Shot it down, yeah. So they're scrambling, they're just gonna switch their jail to hold for seventy-two hours and they gotta ship it off.
And when I was, when I was reading the article the week before in the Waterfront paper, they were talking a lot about placing those, placing that bond with the courthouse and the bond enforcement center and the jails makes it even harder.
Sell. Nobody wants to spend money on those kinds of things.
But I did see, I did see in the, in one of the emails I got from Stacy Ackerman, which is, she's the, she works with the South Coast Sheriff's Association, is they're, they are starting to put some, some talks together for some of the legislators for the next legislative session regarding how South Coates are saving their, their jails. As far as what they can use, all they can use tax dollars more efficiently, they use some of those tax dollars towards both keeping the jails that are still open and running and then jails like ours that, you know, help use cap into some of those tax dollars to make sure that ours stay up to date.
Sure, that makes sense.
Because otherwise it keeps coming back. Keeps coming back on the county to try to, try to do that. It's just not, it's not working across the state. So there's sixty-six counties, you know, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, I jails left in the whole state.
Really? Wow, that's pretty amazing.
I think in that case it was, it was objectionable.
Yeah. It's usually the year I expect.
So sitting at fifty-nine inmates today. We got the bulk fuel tank installed over, over at the jail. So that can get, next time we're ordering bulk fuel, Pat can put that on his order. It doesn't sound like we'll need to have it electricaled in because all it has is a, is a regular electrical cord that it needs. And they're gonna conduit, conduit it right into the, uh, to Curtis's, uh, maintenance room. Oh, right there, so we'll have it through on off switch right in the...
Back by the solibator?
Yeah, we put it right between the, right between the generators there and the, uh, the fuel tanks. So it's already, it's surrounded our whole coast sides. And then we'll probably just put something up, um, maybe the whole pulse up right in front of it.
Thousand one.
So when we get a fuel put in, are they gonna charge us more because we'll have to stop at the heavy department right across?
Big's never... They're gonna give more fuel sales.
Well, I would think so, yeah. I would hope so. I would hope so, yeah, it's another thousand.
I know Big is always the same all the way across, but I don't know like both of Big's.
Just have to mention it to them, I guess it'll be worth it next year.
The new business stuff I have for him is the dispatch, all the dispatches have been going through the new certification software for the new programs that will be starting. There were two of them that went through the process yesterday. There's three more that are going through the process today, so they've been busy trying to, trying to get those certifications done. Just been busy trying to all cut up and knowing what the changes are going to be from the old software, the new software. Remember that flip sheet that she showed us that they were using? No, she went into the computers and she's had to put, she's basically go through and put all that in. And we set the piece after this with our software talks. Done a pretty incredible job.
She's working really good with that girl.
James is back. He came back yesterday. He did say to pass on a thank you for the, for the car that came. They're trying to, uh, plug it on, I guess. His son was a, was an organ donor, so I think there were three, three organ recipients that are, receive organs from, from his transplant.
Does high properly do our policy have some provisions for that? He doesn't have to explain if they should...
How's our, what are dispatches doing that came back that had the heart issues, Carlin?
Janessa anticipated it was gonna take a week or so to get him kind of cut back up. After about the second day, he was, they looked, they looked at each other and said, you clearly know what you're doing, so he's been off, off to the races.
I mean, feeling well enough to, is he full time then again or?
Uh, he's not, he's not full time yet. He's filling in on some, on some of the swing, swing shift because that's what works for his PT, does PT in the morning.
Sure. Good, reply back.
That's helped relieve, relieve some of the stress there. Let's see. The only other thing I have is that Janessa and I submitted the preliminary application for the cops grant yesterday. So we'll be waiting to, we'll be waiting to hear back in the next couple of weeks to find out what we're, what we get accepted for. So there's some updates I should probably give you on what that, what this cops grant actually entails. I think when I, in the past, when I talked to you about it, it was a seventy-five, twenty-five, fifty-fifty, twenty-five, seventy-five match. This one this year is a little bit different. It's actually a seventy-five with a twenty-five percent match for four years. With a fifth year, with a fifth year obligation to keep the program running on our own, on our own accord. So essentially when we were looking through the numbers, Janessa and I, we would be looking at, the sheriff's office would be looking at, if, if we get selected for the grant, we would be only obligated for about a twenty-two hundred dollar bill over the course of four years for officer. Sorry, I, I didn't say it right. Twenty-two thousand dollar bill over the course of four, four years. For wages.
So you get, get like five years for the price of two, basically.
Yeah.
What's that gonna be?
We applied, we applied for, we applied for two.
Really?
We applied for two. The, the problem that we ran into is you can't say, hey, I already have somebody I like. That's the person I'm gonna pay for. These are, they have to be like, hey, we're hiring a new person or increase in the size of our police force to help with these, with these things. So the scenario that we're looking at right now is if we find out that we become eligible, then, you know, while Bean is, Deputy Bean is deployed, we would probably be able to use that, that person as that new air to not sure if I have to fill that spot, but also take on these roles that we're, we're looking at for both of up north in the Rossell and Wacken tenure and down south in the Summit, Willmire. I got a call from the Summit Superintendent last week and they are, they are incredibly interested in having some school resource officer, time, police officer coming to do this school at this coming school year. So working on that and trying to, trying to kind of get that all together. Just up at the Rossell School Board meeting last night and they have, they have a lot of interest in the same thing. Having somebody up there designated time. And we're doing that to try to solve two problems. One, by getting an officer in the school, you'll reduce the overall crime and, and calls for service that we have up in that area. And then the other, the other thing is it would potentially help the municipality with the cost associated with paying that officer.
School kicking.
Yeah, the school would be able to kick in with some of their, their funding. So there's a, there's a lot of interest from the schools. And Willmire fits right in there too. They're really interested in, in having somebody down there. Because it just starts to solve a lot of your, your petty things that officers are getting all, the communities more than just... The rest of the people in there, it's just more of an irritating thing and they, you know, every time they call and we're across the county, it's, even if it's twenty minutes, like you get there by that time, you know, just spinning his tires on the streets.
Long line, yeah.
But yeah, that's, that's what we're, we're looking at. So I mean, fingers crossed, it would be a great thing for us to be able to do that because it would help us significantly in the financial, in the financial area. We have, the other thing is, is we still have, we wouldn't have the burden of adding another patrol vehicle to our fleet because we have that other high patrol car that we purchased that Kiefer just got the, the new radio installed into it and, you know, the, the electronics installed. Officer is gonna be doing his primary amount of time up in the Rossell area right now. We did get the vehicle from up there. We got the decals off it, got it all cleaned up and we had to do some changes with the electronics in there. Needed a different radio that we already had, so we have, we have two vehicles waiting, waiting to go.
You had much luck with the, you lose some interviews or the new hires, have you had any resumes that come in?
So, we have, we're actually, we're actually full right now on the deputy side. We hired, we hired, and I should bring him up here to introduce him to you guys. We hired Dylan Blausdicker, he's from Lake City, Minnesota, which is way up by Waukesha. He was actually in the same graduating class as Brody Farmer, who's been working since January. And he didn't want to work in Minnesota, so that was the, that was the little word, that was the little word coming back. And he's been, he's been, been really easy to train, so things are, things are going along pretty well, so I would expect probably ready to start getting out on his own body at the end of the season. He is Minnesota certified, so it had to be the South Dakota reciprocity. Brody Farmer looks like he's gonna probably take his reciprocity here in July.
Good, yeah.
Things are, things are moving good in the, in the deputy department. I just got a call, I just had a talk with Wyatt Younge last night. He's interested in moving back to the area, I gave back corrections, so we are sending him over an application today and he's gonna be looking at coming back here and starting in corrections, which will be excellent, he has experience, he worked around county correction there, first security task, where he sounds like, up in the Faraway area and it's just, it's time to come, come home. So, he's gonna start in corrections and then if eventually, if eventually he feels like, you know, looking at law enforcement, the direction he wants to go, ask somebody to kind of form from him.
Doesn't he have a degree in that?
Uh, he does, he does have that criminal justice background.
I know Wyatt quite well and he might have a little trouble fit through that door. He is, he is a one big boy and that'd be a good business if we could bring him on as a employee.
Was, was he there before? He only mentioned to me that he worked for Ron County Corrections, we were talking a little bit about what he'd be doing, he's like, oh, yeah, I've been working for Ron County Corrections, so I don't know if he did.
Okay, all right, I just thought, no big deal, I mean, I just thought.
So, that would be a, that would be a really nice, that would be a really nice addition to our staff or.
And he'll probably stay alone?
Yes, our corrections team is really starting to, to ask me stroke of the law, so.
So, it's good.
He could live, we got a lot of bad.
You apprehended or the city police apprehended the vandal?
Yes.
Did the damage, was it just last one person that damaged?
There were two directly involved with the, the vandalism, almost six of them that were, that were there as hard witnesses and things like that. A grandmother, one of the kids involved, saw it, posted, I posted last week and she came up to the sheriff's office and turned the young man in. It was a long day of investigating, but, but we kind of got down to the nuts and bolts of it by the end of it. And so, there are two individuals that are charged with the crimes of vandalism, entire splash, the painting, the oiling, all of that, so.
Were they in fact gang members, is it, or?
Uh, they have associations, yeah. It's, it's really common for teenage kids that, that may not have a incredibly stable environment at home to try to seek out relationships with other kids that have similar backgrounds and then that, that tends to be something that they have in common, so they create a family between each other and then, and then try to protect each other that way because.
Officer's period of charge, as adults, if anybody's saying?
I, I don't know. That, I'll have, I would have to clarify all of that with.
Damage to the vehicle, what, what did that come to in terms of dollar amounts?
Uh, I'm actually longer picking up this afternoon. Yeah, I have a feeling it's gonna come right around, right up to about that thousand dollar mark. The problem came in was the seals that were around the window on the door, that's so saturated with the motor oil that they had to replace all of those because it all, it actually seeped down into the door. The paint and everything else came off just fine, it was pretty much a damage to the vehicle, just replacing the seals around the door, or, or the handle. Fortune, incredibly fortunate.
Your Facebook page mentioned a reward.
Yep.
What, what, did you end up giving the reward to?
I, I did, I did. I paid a hundred and fifty dollars to the, the woman who put us on the right track.
In the future, you probably should give us a heads up on that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Because we get, people ask us, they see that post, someone's, you see that post on Facebook, you know, I want to talk to them, you know, you start asking questions, we just gonna look.
Oh, no.
Okay, yeah, so a heads up would be much appreciated there.
And I think it was probably after, after we had our meeting that day, it was just, just burned me up, it's burned me up inside. For all I get is, a lot of it was, you know, working with the kids here in school, I have great relationships with ninety-nine percent of them. And so, I just had this feeling that somebody, somebody knew something.
That's a bragging kind of thing too, once you're done.
That's kind of what I thought, somebody knows, somebody knows something and that was, that was the motivation for the movement. And then trying to overcome this feeling of, well, I don't want to snitch on so and so, and that's this mentality that some of these have. I had probably half a dozen kids reach out to me with different things that, you know, I heard this or I heard that, even kids down in Smarlock, Willmeyer, previously attended school here that were appreciating the same. Putting us on the right track, so, and that's really where we were at, we didn't have any suspects. At the start of, at the start of Tuesday, when I was here meeting with you guys after it happened, there were, we had zero suspects, so to have them inciting Wednesday night was, was pretty good.
Very good. We'll handle these contracts.
Okay.
We'll need a motion, we can do it in a group, a motion for authorization for me to sign the contracts with the Flandrews, Antique, Sue tribe, the Dua County and Hamlin County, is there a motion for authorization by Carlson, is there a second to that? Simple, thank you. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Tom, you'd mentioned it one time, you know, trying to entice some of these agencies to bring more prisoners up because some of the things you might be able to do to.
You know, piece of reason, was talking about opposing a regional jail, I don't know why I can't be. With this detail things, they could business, you're gonna do.
Well, they can.
Well, yes, yes, they, yes, they can. The only problem sometimes creates are some judges across the circuit, one judge, one judge wants him standing right in front of him, the next judge says, yeah, three counties over, there's, there's no reason to transport him all the way over here. So, it's just, it can be a judge to judge.
One of our judges was kind of reluctant for a while there to do the, the video.
And then they did it.
Yeah.
And they liked it.
Yeah.
That was one of those lessons of COVID, maybe you'd say is that it got people to get used to some of that and then started to see, you know, hey, maybe I don't need a private process any for a meeting.
You'd even mention too that if they, if they were several counties way in, you couldn't do the video, that if you offered a service that you transported a one way or something, you could.
It would entice people to bring their, their.
Yeah, and you might have to have additional personnel to make that happen, but if you saw a big enough demand, it might be something that would snag it.
Yeah, we can definitely, I can have James reach out, you know, I can kind of discuss what I might want to like.
Trying to make Lawrence County look more attractive to those people.
Well, you have to transport, you have to like, you know, maybe quite a lot, but there's a certain, try to do it your own way.
That, when we lose, yeah, when we lose that, I would think that most likely probably go back.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we kind of talk about.
Because you're, because we've been looking at trying to replace ten.
Yeah, but, but Kennedy, they do what they are, yeah. And of course, they come at a higher rate. Yeah. Did you hear anything more, I mean, are they doing anything out there or?
I keep hearing that they are.
I guess all I ever saw was that one article in the paper, they got the money and they're moving forward.
Where they're at, admire that thing.
It's right over Kennick, Kitty Cornfield, is it an old school over there, I think is where they should put it, old grade school maybe, or? Kennick, Kitty Cornfield, where the tribal offices are, bus are parking lot.
Go home now, go drive off.
I, I haven't heard anything since I first saw it in the paper, probably four, five, six weeks ago, whatever it was.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard much talk.
Why, no, they got a lot going on with different money they got spent here and there and this rehab center out here is getting close to being finished and I'm sure they're pretty busy, so they need some back burner.
Your camera's on and keeps flashing.
No, it's not. Just a reminder that it's turned on.
How do you know the green light is on?
There's a red, there's a red light on the other side.
Oh.
So, that's on.
So, now, we have the green bird's eye?
Because here's like when I saw, there's a television program I saw where if something happens and your camera wasn't turned on, you could push a button, it goes back and picks up something for two minutes, is that correct?
Really?
So, it's always recording?
So, technically always recording, you know, yeah, it's just kind of like, if I, if I take this back and put it right on the document station, all that was shown in the recordings was from that time that I turned it on. You know, but then if you needed to, you can actually go back into the settings of the camera and go back, pull by and stuff that happened prior to.
How long do they record, like you get?
I've seen, I've seen matters on the length of the video. I had three hours of video last week and it was about twenty percent. The battery will die, the battery will die way before the, if you run out of memory. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, better.
Can I ask one question about funeral leave? Okay, so, in our, in our policy, it does say that they are entitled to eight hours, okay? Unless, under extra, extraordinary circumstances, it's going to be extended. Are we just thinking of eight hours for James and, and then his?
Wife and daughter?
Now, his, his wife and daughter also are just.
Just wife.
Just his wife.
Does it go on to say that that, they get to that time, doesn't come out, isn't there also something in there that you could use so many days and whatever, whatever?
Yeah, there's that. James would have that, but his wife isn't going to have anything because she just started working, correct? So, I, I would just, you know, kind of throw it out there, I mean, this was a.
Well, the clause that says can be extended, I think we should extend it. Awful circumstances, I don't know, he posted a Facebook video of a little ceremony that was out in the parking lot and, I think there's a lot for a family to go through and I think that's a small token on our part to give them a week off of that, don't you?
Thank you for this.
All right, see you. We need a motion for executive session, we talked about personnel and I think that'll be the last thing that we do.
Pay bills.
Do you bill?
We'll do that on, on camera. Is there a motion to pay bills, by simple, is there a second? Or gallup, thank you, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, the bills are paid. If you want to stick around, you can, but we'll adjourn. Okay. Motion for executive session, by simple, second by Carlson, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Executive session.
This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift for all your pond needs, countryside aid, assisted living and memory care in Rosalt, where your family is our family, First Savings Bank of Sisseton, to use our online banking to save you time, Stilson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels, Tri-State Water in Sisseton for all your water needs, water softeners and reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton, and of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.
What's up, chairman? We need a motion to adjourn. Johnson, is there a second for, all, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries, we're done. Thank you.